Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next regular meeting is scheduled for Friday, May 12, 2017, at 9:00 a.m. at the Community Center, 3500 Edgewater Drive. Please silence or turn off your cell phones. I have a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I still move.
Second.
Any discussion? Public comment? Okay, Chrissy.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp? Oh. President Gilpin?
Yes. I have a motion to accept the action agenda.
Motion approved.
And second.
You guys got anything? Okay, public comment? Okay, Chrissy.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes. First thing we have on the agenda is the auditor presentation of Dermot Davis and Company.
Supervisors, Matt Lee is the CPA and he is the auditor in charge of our engagement and he's going to do a presentation for us today.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's a pleasure to be back. I love coming down here. It's a lot of fun. We'll get started, try and keep it brief. We start, we always start with the audit opinion and this year it's another clean opinion. The best opinion we can give is unmodified. The general fund balance decreased approximately $224,000 to $4 million, which represents 117,000 of total expenditures, or if you don't consider capital expenditures last year, which were somewhat high, it actually represents closer to 160% of normal operating expenditures. The waterfront stayed pretty level. The decrease of $46,000 is pretty de minimis considering $14 million of total net position. There was a slight income before a transfer to the general fund to start the project for the maintenance building. We repeated the management comment again over the investment policy shortly after year end. A new investment policy was adopted, which negates the need for further CPE. The district really has no investments of significance and, in my opinion, it's a good idea to just default to the state requirements and not require the extra effort of having a fully developed investment policy and requiring CPE. And we also have repeated the comment regarding the unpaid fifth third note. This is a snapshot of the last five years of general fund balance. As you can see, it's remained pretty steady. The reserves are quite healthy as discussed previously. This is the revenues and expenditures over time, again giving an idea of how things change year to year and how the transfers, the one item of emphasis is the transfer amount going down last year. And this is the water and sewer fund, revenues and expenses over time. And here, we're pretty steady, pretty even, and you can see the comparison to total expenses and revenue, and depreciation is emphasized because it is a big non-cash item. And this is the water and sewer fund net position again, very stable over time. That's the end of the presentation. Anyone, any questions?
Yeah, I got one.
Sure.
But go ahead, I got to find it in here first.
I've got a couple here.
Okay.
I've marked these as questions for you, any questions for Omar and Tanya, so you have to give me a second. On page, this report, page 46, we talk about the financial condition assessment.
Yes.
You stated a condition that the debt service fund is in deficit of $10 million. And then right after the cause of that is the failed to pay, the district, landowners, most, a lot of them have failed to pay their assessments. Does, is that cover that whole $10 million?
It's the fifth third note specifically, which only covers a portion of the district and the non-payment relates to the fact that the assessments collected were insufficient to cover the required debt service payment.
Yeah, okay.
Which is the same thing with the bonds, but due to, basically wording in the documents, the bonds aren't required to be carried on the notes. You combine the wording of the documents with the accounting standards, you don't have to carry the bonds, but you have to carry the note. It's a sticky situation and it's kind of something we inherited from prior auditors as well. And there's really been no movement on the note to get it off your books. The accounting standards have an exception for special assessment debt, but there are other, there are other things with the note that require it to be carried.
Okay, I understand that. Another point was, it was the independent, when I go through these audits, after a while, when I wake up, I realize that it goes to go to the end of them. And in the independent audits report of compliance with the requirements of the Section 4 statute, you say in there in the last paragraph, "In our opinion, Sunland Lake Improvement District complied in all material aspects with the aforementioned requirements of the year ending September of 2016, except for the non-compliance noted in Appendix C on page 47." So in other words, we complied materially with the requirements for the state.
That's correct. That special test was introduced a couple of years ago and it's just over how your money's invested. And your only investments at this time are certificates of deposit.
Right.
Which are allowed under the state default law. And the district always had its own policy, which was effectively repealed in October of 2016 with the new policy that was adopted, that just says that the district is going to default to investments allowed by state statutes.
Okay. Well, on the Appendix B, the financial emergency condition, it says a failure to make debt service payments when due. I just didn't understand. I mean, I know it goes with the collection by the property owners was insufficient to pay that principal, or the interest due on the series.
Correct. And that's, one of those, the reason that comment's there is required by state law to evaluate the financial condition and there are criteria as far as, the financial emergency condition is the state law requiring us to apply those procedures. And the other comment under failure to pay when due is basically compliance with debt covenants. So under the fifth third note, which is fully matured, the district was originally required to acquire permanent bond financing to pay off that note. And basically, it's been due since, I think, 2008 and the district doesn't have a way to pay it basically at this time. And it's not required to do, to pay, other than to collect and remit assessments from property owners. That's the only obligation the district has, other than securing permanent bond financing.
Okay. In the Appendix C, it talks about non-compliance provisions of the contracts or grant. The condition was that during the audit, we noted the required continuing education courses are not properly taken or documented.
Correct.
And then, but the recommendation mentions that the, it's been, this requirement's been eliminated.
Correct. In state law, and this is the test that we're required to do, is that if the district has its own investment policy, so the state law allows you to create an investment policy that allows more investments. You can have a broader range of investments, you can undertake riskier investments. As the caveat to that, state law requires whoever's in charge of the investments to undergo eight hours of CPE every single year. If the district has no policy and defaults to the very limited shortlist the state allows, then that CPE is not required. And that was what I was trying to say earlier about the comment, was that because the list is so short and so simple and the district's investments already are in compliance with that shortlist and are so simple, I felt that, it's my opinion, that the CPE isn't even necessary. And that's in compliance with state law now that the district does not have its own policy.
Okay. Do you have one?
Yeah, I had some similar questions, but Tanya answered them for me. But the one on page 37 is the one that in 2017, you show a lease agreement of $82,241 and then the next year's $12,630 and I was questioning why the huge drop off. And I was told that $60,000 of that $82,000 is our contract with Billy Casper because we have a six-month notification clause, whatever you want to call it.
Correct.
So why wouldn't that clause, well, first of all, I question why it's there because we can give them notice and they can still be employed for six months. It doesn't mean that just because we give them notice, they're fired immediately, so.
Correct.
So it might be an obligation under a different circumstance, but why wouldn't that same obligation apply to the succeeding years as well?
The way that disclosure works, as required by GAAP, is that the, we're disclosing if the district shut down on September 30th, the required minimum payments under your existing contracts. In most cases, most of the district contracts are one year or less, so that's why there's a huge drop off in subsequent years. We include six months of the Billy Casper because if, on 9/30, you decided to shut down the district, you would be required to still pay Billy Casper $60,000 for the six months of management. And that's basically what it is, is just to capture what you're absolutely required, drop dead, required to pay, no matter what.
Okay.
Does that, is that sufficient?
I understand it. I'm just curious why it wouldn't apply to the following years because the contract has no end date to it.
That's correct. Next year, when you see the statements again, that first year, 2018, will have $60,000 included for Billy Casper.
Okay.
Tanya, do you need, do you think for the public, you could explain a little bit about that $10 million and what we're doing to try to get that off the books and explain to the, you know, what it is?
Yes. Just to make everything clear, we do collect payments from landowners in the district and we remit them to the trustee every single month. And this is both on the phase five bond and the fifth third note. The fifth third note is the $10 million liability that has been on our books. Of course, we are, we are not liable to pay that. We remit, we remit what we collect. And it is not enough money to reduce that note. Every year, the interest accumulates, accrued interest, and the note amount goes up, it doesn't go down. Not only that, the lands, or the lots that have been cheated to the county, the liens of the fifth third, the fifth third lien that is on those properties has gone away. I mean, there is no, there is not a note, this note does not exist anymore at the $10 million liability. That's another issue. Number one, we're not responsible for payment. Number two, I would say at least 60%, 70% of the note is gone because of the estatement process. We have reached out to Tom Gonzalez. He was the, he's an attorney out of Tampa. He assisted the district when Fifth Third Bank, they notified that we were in default of this note. Well, we actually, we're not in default, so we, he helped us and we wrote an opinion letter at the time. And Mr. Gonzalez has agreed to help us request an administrative hearing with the State of Florida Joint Legislative Audit Committee to request a hearing to talk about these issues about Fifth Third Bank. And so that's where we are. We're going to do a request before June 1st.
Very good. I just, I thought maybe, I didn't know if all the supervisors knew that, but I think the public should know that you're working on it.
And actually, Fifth Third Bank did in fact file a lawsuit, to the best of my recollection, and Mr. Gonzalez is the one that helped us get that dismissed. Because they didn't have a basis for, you know, the claim that they, the cause of action that they filed.
Thank you.
Okay, is that everything? Any more questions?
I don't have any.
Okay, well, thank you very much. It's good to see you again. I'll be looking forward to future opportunities to audit the district in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
The next resolution I read will have a couple blanks in it because we're going to discuss it and probably decide today what we're going to do, so. Resolution number 2017-0428-24. A resolution of the Sunland Lake of Sebring Improvement District to award RFP 17-01 for repairs to the roof of the district office to blank for blank. Do we have any?
Motion approved.
And I'll second that.
So as Supervisor, President Gilpin mentioned, this request here is for RFP 1701. We advertised for the district office roof replacement. We've been discussing the roof for quite some time. Obviously, the age has been a factor as far as, and also some visible leaking. We received three vendors who quoted for the RFP. There were four options that the vendor was able to quote. We kept the existing structure as is with a small pitch at the top with shingle and aluminum. And then we also designed a new roof over design that would also have the shingle and aluminum option included. We provided a spreadsheet that shows the pricing across the board for each vendor's proposal. We will need a budget amendment for this request. Like you said, it is blank at the moment until we decide today what that number will be. We'll be pulling the funds for this project from prior year fund balance.
Okay, I got a few questions for you. We have the roof over and then the roof pitch. What is the recommendation, Mike? I think our original concern with this was to at least get a pitch.
Exactly. Right now, we have a, the top of the roof is flat.
Right.
So the new design, to leave it the same way, the same way we have it right now, but to change the top of it, it would be a six-inch pitch on top. With the roof over, the design would be, all the buildings here at Sunland Lake would kind of, would look the same. I suggest to go with the metal. It's a longer warranty. With the roof over, which is $49,000 more, the plus with the roof over is we'll save money on the air conditioning because there's more ventilation up there. There's less seams. Or go with, go with option two, which is $86,000. The roof will look the same, except for the top. We get, the warranty going with the metal is, is about 20 years longer for the warranty, depending what we want to do with the building. My suggestion is to definitely go with metal.
Yeah, I think we, I agree with that. I just thought back when we were discussing it and we mentioned that this had a flat roof and I've worked with flat roofs and courthouses before and they're worthless. And I didn't know that we had the whole roof option for the roof over.
That would be option four.
But yeah, but that's the one that will, it will complement the other buildings.
Exactly, absolutely, yeah. All the buildings look the same. Like if you look, if you look out over the water here, you can see the community center, the clubhouse, they're all going to look the same. All the roofs will look the same.
And the warranty on the metal?
They say 35 years, or they say 30 years on a roof, but they prorate it. So the longer the roof is on there, it goes down, the warranty goes down. So.
Yeah. Well, for the last 35 years.
It's like buying tires, you know? You know, like when you buy a tire, it's how many miles you have on it, so.
Yeah.
You know, it's the years.
Okay, so what?
But if we want to use this building, now, I think two years ago or three years ago, we had a structural engineer come in and they said the building structurally is very good. Now, it's going to cost us a million and a half dollars to remodel it, to make it an office. It's going to cost us a million dollars to build a new district office. But we can still use this building for whatever we want. So I mean, I think, think we should invest in, invest in this building now and then we know we're going to get 20 years out of it, you know, even as an office, so.
Okay, that's all my questions.
Well, I guess the big thing is, we don't know what we're going to end up using the building for. We are running out of room in that current building. But in my opinion, there's going to be something that we need that building for. If we get into the stay and play, it may be a spot for that. We can always keep security in it. Maybe an exercise, maybe the exercise room moved over. I can't answer what it's going to be, but it's, it looks to me like that building's way too good to tear down in the near future. And I'm like, while I, I want to go with a metal roof on it, as I understand it, that metal roof is guaranteed for 50 years. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And in my opinion, and this is strictly my opinion, is if you do the existing building with aluminum, where you have the close to vertical, you have a little slope on the very top and then you have a close to vertical coming down and then going out, that's going to be awful hard to keep that from leaking. Where the, the whole roof over, yeah, we've got another $35,000, $40,000 in it. But with the whole roof over, we've got a much better looking building, a much more appealing building, and we've got something that I don't think can leak because it's, everything is sloping off from the very beginning.
There's, well, there's a lot less chances leaking with less seams. Just to be, you know, it's just common sense, so. I mean, if we go with option four, it's $49,000 more, yes, but that's based over, you know, 30, 40 years.
You scatter that over an extra 20, 25 years, it doesn't make it sound very, big an eye.
No, it's less than $1,000 a year.
Kurt?
Okay. Architecturally, I kind of agree with the metal building. It'll make all the buildings look similar, but my biggest concern is the very last page, the roof over drawing. When you look at that drawing, if it's anywhere to scale, that's part I'm not sure of, this one right here, that look. I mean, you got all roof and no walls there. It's just like this roof overwhelms the building. And that's the concern that I have as far as appearance goes, but, and doesn't this roof have a warranty? I mean, you guys are talking about leaks, but isn't it?
They all do, yes. They all have warranty.
So if there's a leak, they're going to come back.
Even the shingles is 30 years, you know, the other one's 50.
No, but I mean from the contractor, is there a warranty that he's going to repair and take care of this roof?
Drew, you can answer it, because you.
I believe they have a standard for like workmanship. I think it's a standard one year.
One year.
Yeah. Verify that.
Kurt's question, I saw that too. And I just thought, is there a standard pitch that these people, we have to go by?
There's a four liability code, I believe, at the minimum. And I think that's close to the 1 to 12 for what.
1 to 12?
For that flatter.
Yeah. Well, 1 to 12 wouldn't be, I don't think it'd be that obvious in height there. What's the length?
Right, six inches.
For the, that would just be if we put the cap on.
The cap.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
You wouldn't even see it, really.
Yeah, it would be almost invisible, just looking at it.
I'm talking about the roof over there.
Can we just knock this off?
If the pitch is a foot, inch of a foot.
Seven and a half to 12 versus a 4 to 12. I mean, the pitch is fine as far as the pitch goes. It just looks like you got this huge amount of metal on it.
Oh, yeah.
A little skinny spike or something.
Yeah. It's got to be out of proportion.
It just looks out of proportion to me.
I think part of it is the way that that's set back in.
It says on the drawing that it's not to scale, so it might not be quite as.
Ugly is that?
It's going to appear the same way. It might not be quite as tall, but it is going to be, it is going to be noticeable whenever it's installed.
Will we be able to get a, maybe a mockup for that construction, cardboard or something like that, that we can take a look at instead of?
I'm sure we could if we absolutely needed to.
I mean, I'm just talking about a mockup that we can just look at, you know, just this big.
Or just draw it to scale.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can, I can request from the draftsman that did it to get us actual scale drawing or make sure it is.
I will agree that just, just the, just not the roof over, but the regular, I mean, you've still got a 40-year looking building when you get done. That's the problem I have with it, is that if you want to update this community and keep it moving forward, that it's not the look you want, but, so I, I don't know. I'm probably more in tune with doing the roof over if it doesn't look ugly when we're done, just the replacement.
I don't know too much about roofs, but I just know that $49,000, it better be a hell of a lot better roof than, and isn't the other, the $89,000 roof guaranteed for about the same time?
Yeah, it's in the shower. Yeah.
I mean, I really don't care and I'll go along with the, with the rest of the guys, but Mike, your recommendation is what?
I just want to go.
I don't want to pin you down, but.
I want to go with metal.
Yeah, well, I don't think anybody's arguing the metal.
In my opinion, if we want to stay with the rest of the look of Sunland Lake, we should go with the number four.
Okay.
Because if you stand, I mean, if you stand to look everywhere, all those roofs look the same, except that one. That looks like the Pizza Hut.
And in your mind?
That's just my opinion. I don't have a vote, so.
And in your mind, $49,000, it's worth it?
Well, yeah, I do, because if we want to move on, you know, and keep the community going, the next building, I mean, if, if we build another building for offices, we want to stay with the look of Sunland Lake. We don't want to have, you know, four buildings that all look different, so.
Okay.
Okay?
Do you guys have a preference or a motion?
I, I'm like a motion.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry, public comment. I guess not. Okay, back to the board.
I'll make a motion. We adopt Plan Number Four.
I'll second it.
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes. A resolution of the Sunland Lake of Sebring Improvement District to award contract for repairs to the Matanzas Lift Station to Max Environmental for $23,588.
Motion approved.
And second.
Who's addressing that?
I'm going to go ahead and address this. Our utility department has been working with Poston Engineering. They found one of our lift stations, the Matanzas Lift Station, has been under, in need of some repairs. We've provided some pictures to show you some of the deterioration that's been occurring. We've marked out some of the pinholes and some of the, you can see some of the erosion that's occurring within that lift station. What's causing that is just a liner that's been installed in the past, starting to deteriorate, starting to go away, and it's causing that concrete barrier to deteriorate and pieces are falling off into the lift station, which is hitting the propellers and damaging the propellers. Not only that, Poston Engineers has informed us that the rebar is actually showing, so we're concerned that there might be some structural integrity that we need to address pretty quickly here. We've gone out and we've gotten three quotes. We provided a recommendation with Max Environmental, who provided the lowest quote at $23,588. We made sure that all the quotes are apples to apples. They're all providing the equipment that Poston Engineer believes is adequate to get it done.
Is that the lift station that's down here after the woods?
Yes.
When you swing right?
Yes.
It's the one behind you, number 13?
14.
14T?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I can tell you something. We have problems with smell. We have problems with, with smell, you know, it, you know, it's just gotta be repaired, and, and we got a lot of complaints about the smell there, so, you know, if we repair all this, this should help a lot, I know, the whole area.
Drew, is that a liner they put in that, or is it, what, how do they, how do they fix the inside of that?
Um, going off of the, the existing, when they built the lift station, usually they used to just do an epoxy coating, they call it coal tar epoxy, um, and that does have a finite lifespan, like anything else, but, um, basically portions of that have been either scraped off, or the gases eat it away, um, and then it gets to the concrete, and that's what we're seeing, the concrete's chipping and falling off, and it's to the point where it's just getting to the rebar, and that's, when it gets past that, that's when we need to spend some serious money. But this will get us at least another 10 years down the road, 'cause lift station replacements, 200 to 250,000 if you do a whole, the whole thing, so we don't wanna have to spend that if we can help it. But, this new liner, they'll go in and sandblast the inside and get all that old coal tar epoxy off, and they'll regroup all of the concrete to fill in all the holes, clean up everything, and they're gonna come back in with a, it's a calcium illuminate coating, that's, I think it's about a half inch thick that they put on, and it's like a 8,000 PSI concrete mortar that's highly resistant to, to erosion and corrosion. Um, and basically, they say that's like a sacrificial coating, so instead of the concrete and steel getting eaten up in it, it'll eat this away, but at a really slow rate. Um, but it's, they guarantee it for the minimum of 10 years. Um, a lot of guys put 12 years, 15 years on it, but there's many that have gone past that with it, so.
Okay. Anybody else? Uh, I know, I have two friends that live in that building right there, and they've told me for the last nine months or a year, that smells. And, of course, I shared that with Mike, but it has been going bad for the last year, so I think it needs to be done. Public comment? Okay, back to the board. Any more? Okay, Chrissy?
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes.
May, Mike, before we move on, I, I still wanna have that drawing done, from, you know, the building, option four, to scale, ground level, look at it. Okay, thanks.
Resolution number 2017-0428-26, a resolution of the Sunning Lake of Sebring Improvement District to ratify a letter by the general manager regarding district enforcement of certain restrictions and architectural review rights on commercial property located on US 27 South.
Motion approved.
Second.
Well, I was waiting for Wally, I thought he was going for it.
Is that you, Tanya?
Yeah, I, I have a, attached for your consideration, I have a request by the company named 3200 Avon Park LLC. They, they are a potential buyer for the improved lot located at 3140 US 27 South. The company had requested a letter from the district that would not enforce the sign size to one square foot for a sign that already exists on the property, and no objections to the proposed use as a dermatology practice. So I, I wrote the company a letter, and this is already a, a building that is, exists there, and I said that we would not impose any, any restrictions, you know, that were found when they did a title search on this property, on an existing building. Um, after submitting my letter to the buyer's attorney, the attorney did not accept the letter and wanted a resolution from the Board of Supervisors. And David has been working with the attorney on this issue.
Yeah, basically what it is, is they, you know, they, they want something they can put in the public record and get it recorded. Um, there are, there's basically two sets of documents at play, there's a set of, of deed restrictions that were put in place way back in the, when the district was formed, that basically gives any property owner within a certain, I think there's like three or four, maybe five different units, uh, and they have certain restrictions, and one of those restrictions is, you can't have a sign that's greater than one square foot in area, uh, which makes sense for, you know, residential properties, but it doesn't make a whole lot of sense for commercial properties. Uh, but for whatever reason, it's imposed on those, on those properties, and anyone that owns properties in those units has the ability to enforce it. Well, you know, most, I don't think it's ever been enforced since this district was formed, um, which is why all those businesses along 27 have great big signs. Uh, nevertheless, they want guarantees that they can record, that basically we're not going to, you know, come back at some later date and, and force them to take down their signs and change their property. Additionally, the district has what's known as architectural review rights, which basically says that anybody that wants to build a building on any of those lots, or the certain lots, uh, has to get the district's approval for the design, you know? So, those, to my knowledge, have not been enforced, and in fact, the, what is it, the, the podiatrist office, or the orthopedic place there on the corner, the, right there, that it's a two-story building, there's not supposed to be anything greater than one story. But that got built, and when it changed hands, the district had to, you know, draft a letter, and they accepted a letter that basically says that, yeah, you know, we, we allowed that, you know, even though the architectural review says it shouldn't have been done. So, I don't know what their, the future plans are for this office, aside from what they've mentioned, a dermat- dermatology office, or dermatology practice, they are purchasing a vacant lot next door to it. Um, I don't know if they're going to expand, more likely they're just gonna use it as a parking lot, because my understanding is the, the building that's there now has always had parking issues. Um, so, yeah, that's basically what they're just asking, is that we agree that we're not gonna come back and say, hey, you know, you can't do X, Y, or Z pursuant to these restrictions. And, all, with the time that we've put into it, we've requested they pay for, you know, the, the, for, for my time in drafting, and all the time that we've spent researching this, and, uh, they're willing to do that, so.
So, basically, we're giving up just the sign, that's it, right? We're not giving up any of the other?
Well, it's, no, we're, we're giving up the signs and the architectural review rights to those, to, those properties alone, not the whole, not the whole area, just those two lots.
And to follow up what Kurt just said, then if they decide to put a parking lot in, fine, but if they decide to put in a two-story building, then we will be there to stop that.
Well, technically, no. Technically, we're saying we're not going to enforce the architectural review rights, but they still have to go through the county, you know, they'd have to get a county building permit, if they, you know, if they wanted to do it, if they were gonna build something there, bulldoze it and put up a, you know, put up something, we would have given up those rights.
Yeah. Could we narrow the scope on this approval to, to just that sign, and that they'd have to follow all the rules that are in place after that?
You guys can do whatever you want. I told them, I said that this is, this is, you're requesting a resolution, all I can do is put it before the board, and so if you'd like to modify the resolution to say we're not gonna give up the architectural review rights, or we're going to approve the building as built, um, and any modifications to it, we'll have to, you know, go through the architectural review process, that's your program.
That's one, one thing they requested, is that we waive the architectural rights.
Well, I, I kinda read it as we, they were concerned about the sign, that was it.
No, there were two things, right?
Correct. Yeah, I mean, they are concerned about the sign as well, but, but.
Just because it's there doesn't mean we deny anything, building a two-story building.
Correct.
As far as building size.
They're gonna do something there, aren't they?
I understand the sign, that's just kinda, I don't even know why it's in there, it just doesn't make any sense at all, to me, but.
Yeah.
I give up on the sign, for sure.
To, to us, even, I don't know how Tanya or Dave feel about it, but for us to be in that kind of a business, you know, I, I, I have no problem with waiving the architectural stuff, because I don't know if you wanna be doing that. And the lots aren't very deep, anyway, I, I can't see them ever wanting to build a two or three-story building there.
Might be more of a reason why they'd want to.
Yeah, well, it could be.
Cause they have small land.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, can't go out and go up. Uh, I, I agree with that, and I, I agree with the sign. Have they given any indication of what, how big the sign is that they're gonna put on there?
Oh, I don't think that they, I don't think they wanna change it, you know, the, the sign that's, all of the signs in that area are non-conform.
Now, I know, just, I only have one other thought about this, is I, and, and this is just my thought for, for the future, I think when Tanya gives our, uh, recommendation and a letter to someone, that should stand as part of the record.
Mm-hmm.
Now, I, I, this attorney, I don't know what he's after, whatever like that, whether it's another two hours' pay, or whatever, but I think that letter ought to stand, you know, so that's just my opinion on that. But I'm in favor of the motion.
Anything else? Public comment? It's the old Chin building, Chin Dental building on the Fronty Road, they're going, going up north. And the two lots beside it.
What, yeah, one lot beside it, yeah.
Or one lot beside it.
Oh, it's up by Turner, I was thinking it was the other.
Yeah, no, it's, it's up, uh, if you, if, if you know where the Chin, Chin Dental was, that's where it was. And I, I know from being here the last few years, they moved, and, and they had a, we had a big problem, I think Mike could probably address that, or Tanya, that, but parking was all over the place there, 'cause they had so much. I mean, I, I drive by there, and there was cars parked all over, I mean, and so it's, there is a parking problem there, so I'm, I'm hoping that that's, they've realized that, because it's, there's not.
No, no.
But 10 parking spots in the whole thing. Back to the board? Okay, Chrissy?
Supervisor McCullough?
Wait a minute, what are we voting on here?
The resolution.
Well, there, there's been no motion to amend it, so if you wanna amend it to change, to say something other than what it says, then we need to make a motion in a second, and vote on the amendment.
I'll, I'll make a mo-
I already did, you want, you want, come back up? Yeah, I already asked, Larry.
I s- I served for several years on the Architectural Review Board over at the Preserve, and if we hadn't acted on a lot of things on that, we'd have some real trash in Preserve, so I don't think you should give away your right to review those things. That's just an opinion.
Sir, can I have your name, please?
Sir, can we have your name?
I think your, Rick Holbrook, I think your amendment should include the sign only, and if they wanna come back for a review on the vacant lot, for architectural, for a building, or anything else other than a parking lot, that's what they should do. But as far as the sign goes, give him, give him that, but I wouldn't give him carte blanche on the architectural.
A question, Tanya, should we even vote on this and redo, I mean, talk to them again?
We can, no, no, we can, all we'd have to change is, is, is number four, that says the district shall not seek to enforce any of the ARRs against the property, we'll just say, we'll change that to say the district shall not seek to enforce any of the ARRs against the existing building.
Yeah?
And that means that the, as built, we, you know, we're not going to enforce it, but if you, if you change it, you, you know, we have, we still have the right to review.
Okay.
How's that?
Yeah, sounds good to me.
No, so I need a motion in a second to-
Yeah, we need a motion.
But would that apply to all property alone, or just this one?
Just this one.
Okay.
Yeah, I've got a paragraph in there, the whereas clause, is to say that this is, you know, should not be, uh, this is only to, for this property and any other owners, you know, you're still subject to them.
So, do we need to amend that, then, per your comment, or what?
No, not that paragraph. I think as long as we, all we would have to change is that, is Article Four, that says that we're not going to, to seek enforcement against the property, because the property is the actual lots, and so we're gonna seek it not against the, the existing building. So I just need a motion in a second to approve that amendment.
Okay. Make a motion to approve that we make the suggested amendment.
I'll second that.
Uh, any more public comment? Okay.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes.
We need, sorry, that was for the amendment, now we need one more for the actual amended motion.
Go ahead, Chrissy.
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes.
Okay, we have a discussion on a lot swap program, resolution 10-11 and 3-37.
At the last meeting, we discussed the lot exchange program that the district had approved previously, previous, um, first one back in 2003, and the other from 2010. Um, I've written you, you know, a memo here, disc- Okay, I was gonna see if you could. No. We'll get my, my memo up on screen there. Really, the, the biggest issue with this program now is we no longer have any inventory to do swaps. I mean, we, we might have, you know, 10 or so lots that are available, uh, in the district name, to actually perform a swap, and, and we just don't have the inventory anymore. Back in the day, they used to, you know, and that, that was a viable option, and what this program is, is that the district was getting a lot of questions from lot owners, can we swap for a better lot? Are lots in the middle of nowhere? We made a bad investment, you know, those kinda things. Uh, and I don't even know if, that this program was even entertained, you know, before 2010, I just know that the board did a resolution to have the program, and, so I'm opening it up for discussion today.
My only comment would be is, I, I don't have a problem with the program, I just have a problem with it costing us money, that's all. I mean, if we're gonna start paying part of the legal fees, we're paying, and we end up with a poor quality of lot, to be, you know, so we're the, we're getting the, the bad end of the stick, if you, it's not even an equal stick, we're getting the bad end of it, and, uh, I don't have a problem with the program, but I just, I don't like the way it's written, period, that's it, so. And to your point, probably never use it anyway, so, but, if we're gonna keep it, we should rewrite it, is, I guess is what I'm saying, if we get rid of it, we get rid of it, I don't really care either way.
I don't see why we need it. I mean, from, from Tanya and Omar, I, I don't see any reason to have that program. I, I'm like Kurt, it seems like it's hard to have on the books, but we don't use it, so why have it?
I mean, I can, I can say this, if, if someone doesn't want their lot, they can do a quick claim deed, and deed it over to the district without our knowledge, or to anyone else, I mean, and that's happened, I mean, we have that happen every year. I mean, we don't even know that we have a property transferred, and, bottom line, we really have no use for the lot that's being swapped, anyway, in the, you know, it's, it's a lot in the middle of nowhere, it may, may not even be on a road, so we really don't have a use, and that's what I think Kurt's saying, it costs us attorney fees, it costs us closing fees, and then we have a lot that we no longer, we need for any purposes.
I can't see any, any reason to take it any further, it's, it's, it will drop as it is, it won't.
I would think, Tanya, what, what would we, what should we do to get rid of it?
Just if we can bring a resolution to the next meeting, that says we're gonna cancel the program.
Could you do that?
Mm-hmm. It'll be fine.
Oh, Supervisor, sorry, the, back when we did the award of RFP 17-01, we chose option four, I'm assuming, it wasn't actually expressly mentioned, but I'm assuming we're taking LCOB construction as the low bidder on that.
Yes, good.
I don't know if we need to clarify, I just thought we would clarify that, because we chose option four, we didn't pick an actual.
Okay.
Contractor, but since LCOB construction was the low bidder, that's who we would be choosing.
Okay.
Do we need to do anything about that?
No, no, we're good.
There's a $400, $400 difference, the only, um, we did have problem in the past with COB, um, so I don't know, and I don't know the whole history about it, um, but, for, Omar, you know?
Is there a way we can, I guess this is a question for David, is there a way we can approve option four, give us the ability to contact COB? We wanna give COB the chance, uh, maybe Mike can meet with them, make sure that everything's, you know, hash anything out that needs to be hashed out. If they can't come to the agreement, then maybe we can replace with spires if needed, is there? Is it, do we have that ability?
Oh, no, yeah, absolutely, yeah, you're allowed to do that.
And if it's any different, you'll come back to us? Okay.
Thank you.
Add-on items?
None.
Petitions and communications?
None.
Staff reports?
I just want to give a review of Dash and I. We had another successful year, we had a little over 250 runners, and we had a little less attendance than I've seen in the past with our Easter egg hunt, still it was about 600 people. There was a lot of Easter egg hunts going on in the area that day, those seem to be growing in numbers, so Jonathan and I are looking to do things a little different next year to, to change it up. So that was another successful year. I'm pleased to announce that we've had summer camp registration open for about two weeks, and we're already sold out. So it's the first time that that has happened since we opened it, and this will be our fourth year with the program. So, and then we're starting to look towards Independence Day celebration, which is always a, you know, a huge, a huge hit for the community, so we'll look at doing that, it'll be on Monday, July 3rd.
Is there any way you can increase the number of attendance for your summer camp, so that more kids can come, or not?
We, we look to, there's, a couple of years ago, we did have a couple of weeks where we had about 40 kids, and we tried to keep our camp counselor-to-camper ratio lower. It's more enticing to parents than at other camps in the area. We could add more camp counselors, but that will cost more money, which is not, you know, in the current budget. It's also a challenging with our facilities as well to accommodate a large number of kids, because the times that we are inside, and we do have to be inside some part of the day, the community center is our, is our home, so, or when Mother Nature doesn't cooperate. Also, we have to look at the pool capacity as well, so although we obviously can take more, you know, more people in the pool, it's, it would be a challenge for us with our facilities.
Asking questions.
Sure.
Tanneal, if I remember right, that makes us quite a few dollars, too, but-
Yes.
What did we end up last year with that profit wise?
Well, we bring in, I think last year was between 16 and 17,000 for the summer, but you know, then, you know, you look at the expenditures as well as for the, the staff. Now, the, the supply cost is very little, it's very minimal, we usually budget about 3,000 for supplies, but the staff cost is where, we end up profiting, you know, anywhere between, some years it's $500, some years it's 2,000. So this year, obviously, we're looking, I did go up on the price a little bit, we're still very competitive with other camps, but you know, we'll, we'll probably make a little bit more this year than we have because of that reason, but it's still, you know, it's a service we're providing, so.
Kurt Sporn, General Manager, Sunlake Golf Club. So April for our F and B is extremely busy for outside events, our member events usually end the first week of April, and we have a lot of outside events that we kind of push into the middle or, or end of April, so in this April, we're actually up a little bit from previous years, so that's a good sign, because we're trailing a little bit in our banquet, in our banquet revenue. Did really want to go out of my way to thank Tanya and her crew, Omar and, and Mike and Tanneal, and really everybody at the district is just amazingly helpful to us, and really, really makes it easy to go, go forward, so thank you very much. Relative to golf, we are right now in the process of, of reorganizing, I think we, you know, we had a lot of, a lot of change in the golf shop, but I think that opportunity is really going to give us a great chance to move forward. You know, Kay Mayer's already contacted a, a few of our stay-in-play people, and obviously she has a talent with people, so that's going extremely well. It's definitely nice to see that June 6th, we should have our first closing from a purchase of someone who stayed in the stay-in-play, so that's exciting, and we're, we're talking to them about putting their property in the pool next year for, as a stay-in-play property, since they're only looking to come for November and March. Beyond that, Andy's in the process of, you know, rebuilding his team, if you haven't met Tom Grammuss, he's one of our new assistants, and, you know, after a week or two, it's early, but it's definitely happy when someone is a very pleasant personality and very welcoming, so stop in everyone and say hi to, to Thomas. Moving on to the golf course, rain please, we need rain. And then also with that, I would say next Thursday, we have a call with our regional agronomist, Mike Stevens, to, to dig deeper into our irrigation recommendations for the two golf courses. We've got, you know, Toro is our, is our current provider, we have a lot of Toro-specific processes there, so we're, obviously had contacted Toro and gotten quotes, and then basically your other major player in the irrigation industry is Rainbird, but Rainbird, we know going in will be more expensive, because they'll have to, you know, change out some of the Toro parts, but next Thursday, we'll dig deeper into that. Our clubhouse grounds, just kind of as an FYI, we, we know they need work, and the irrigation around the clubhouse isn't sufficient, so that really, we don't want to re-sod and, you know, have the sod do the same thing that it's done, so just to make a note to everyone that we do see that, and we are, I don't know if embarrassed is the right word, it's probably the right word for me, embarrassed by the way it is now, but we're, we want to fix it, but we want to fix it long-term, so that it doesn't go back to the way it was. Our aerification and the, the grow-in focus on Turtle Run will start May 22nd, that's our first closure, where we'll, we'll close Turtle and do the big tines for three weeks. Then we'll close Deer and do the big tines and be closed for four weeks to allow the tee project to happen, and then we'll, we'll move to the smaller tines and two-week closures, alternating, alternating back and forth. On Turtle Run, we'll be on the back nine specifically, kind of testing out three different processes to compare the use of curfew to the use of indemnify, to the use of a test, you know, test plot without either of those insecticides, to see what, see what our results are. The, the industry in general is moving a little bit away from curfew, you know, for a number of different reasons, and part of it is some resistance by the nematodes, you know, to the product, since it's been out for a period of time now. The tee project, we did our pre-bid yesterday, we had three contractors come to the pre-bid. Two of the contractors had Jeff Harstein and Davey Johnson's company have worked on the facility here in the last five years, and then there was a, a company out of St. Pete West Gapes that I think was a quality company, but they actually came telling us that they couldn't do the work in the timeframe that we have allotted, and they could do it in August, so I'm not sure that they're going to bid, but I was, was happy to see three people come. Right now, our F and B focus, we're really trying to look forward at, at business generation, to make sure that we can keep our F and B numbers up there, or even increase them. We had the, the person from Casper, Kelly Seerites, one of our F and B specialists in sales, she was in Wednesday all day with Mike, and I spent a couple hours with them, just looking forward to try to see as our demographics change, the makeup of our membership, and the makeup of Sebring, you know, what changes we, we can make. You know, one of the things we're going to look into with the location of Stevenson is, you know, contacting them about hosting more celebrations of life, we, we do those for our members, but it's something that happens generally at the right time of day, you know, it happens between 11 and 3 or 4, which isn't when we're busy with, you know, all of our shotgun coming in or our eating. And then we're also just looking for a business plan to see how we can continue forward. One of the things that definitely, you know, came out of it is that we, we definitely will benefit if the, if our architect looks at the banquet room and we can split the banquet room, you know, right now, we have a 150-person banquet room, and if we, we book a, a 50-person banquet that kind of needs privacy, you have to close down the whole room, so hopefully we can find a way to, to put up a divider wall that'll give us a little bit more multipurpose. Appreciate, Tanneal reached out to us, they were bringing in South Florida State College to do a customer service training, we sent Maida O'Brien and Pauline Mater over there, because Tanneal reached out, they had a couple openings, they really enjoyed the program and felt like they gained a lot, and we sent them over there with the basis of being teacher-type trainers to the rest of the staff, so they're going to multiply that work. We do have some new scheduling software that we've gotten for our seating to help us be more efficient, especially like at our big events, Mother's Day, Easter, and so forth. We're starting a bi-monthly, we do a weekly department head meeting, but bi-monthly, we're going to do a meeting to try to look forward, to try to solidify the direction we think the club should go in that'll benefit the district, and then work with the supervisors and the district staff to make sure that that's a compatible vision. Other than that, we're looking forward to next week, Wednesday, when Cliff Shoals comes in to start working on his ideas for the, the kitchen and our seating, and next Friday, with Henry Delosier coming in for his insights and assistance with the stay-in-play and the development of the community. And just a, a final note, that from meeting with the supervisors, they were, were all supportive of going ahead and doing the stay-in-play again next year. Beyond that, do you have any questions?
I, I just have one. The indemnifying, does it work? I mean, if I, if I had, if you were trying to sell something to me, would you go indemnify, or would you go with curfew?
The industry now is, is overly positive on indemnify. Curfew, without me having an in-depth knowledge, I just know what the products do, I don't know the-
Yeah.
-you know, the biological reason for it. Curfew's an exterminant, for 30 days, it kills, it kills 12 to 18 inches down, all the nematodes. And then they come, you know, then they come back, you know, at, at a pace back into the ground-
Right.
-to, to feed back on your, your plant. Indemnify actually has shown residual value up to a year, so it comes in and it, it doesn't kill the nematode, it actually just repels it, and so they're seeing residual value with the indemnify to up to the, up to a year, and environmentally, indemnify is much better. The, the challenge with indemnify is, you know, on the greens, it's actually roughly half the price of curfew, anywhere else, it's four times the price of curfew, so the, the challenge with indemnify is that when you get off the greens, it becomes very expensive. But the use they've seen, it, it's been very positive, it, it does what it says it's going to do, it's just highly unlikely there's many clubs that are going to be able to use it, you know, all over the place. The nice thing about indemnify, since you can put it in a sprayer, it's not like curfew that's injected, it's much harder to just, you can't, you know, if you have a breakout of nematodes on three tees, you can't just call up the curfew guy and ask him to, to come out and spray an acre of tees, where you can mix up the indemnify and, you know, more spot spray it, so. And generics are also starting to come out for indemnify, they're like half the price, we just, you know, you want to make sure it doesn't have half the potency, but the, the industry as a whole is very excited about indemnify, but, you know, it's, this is the first year it's fully on the market, you know, so it's been in testing for about 18 months before that, so, so we're, you know, very happy to see it, and then you have so many different soil compositions, you know, it could work great in a soil 200 miles north of here, and, and not work the same way here, but we're very, you know, very positive about it. The other things about it is we believe that the sludge that we're going to be doing is going to make the indemnify more effective, you know, nematodes like dry soil and weak plants, so if we can, you know, induce a lot more organic matter into the soil, it, it will make the plant healthier, and it'll make the nematode, you know, the plant less attractive to the nematode, so, you know, it's, it's a complicated process that the industry is still learning about, you know, there's a lot of facts, but I don't think they've, you know, put all the dots together.
Yeah, well, you and I have talked about this a lot, you know, you know my thing, I'm just not a curfew guy, it tears a course up, and I see that the indemnify works, and I, I'd really like the idea of indemnify around the edges of the, of the, all the traps to get, because that's the real problem for us, I know, and to, to get that soil, but I'm, I, I've told you, I'm just not a, if I was buying stock, I sure wouldn't buy it in, in curfuing companies, because they're on the way out.
Yeah. Well, the industry is definitely working away from that, I mean, because we want to be good stewards of the environment, and indemnify is better, but it, it's just difficult, I mean, I've only been in the industry for, you know, a little over 30 years, but it, it's hard, because on the golf courses thing, you know, they come and go, so you get three years in, and some things that are, you know, going to be fantastic 10 years later are fantastic, and, you know, sometimes 10 years later, the product's just, you know, not in use anymore.
Well, one of the, would, would one of the options that could be in your research is to not indemnify, I mean, not curfew and indemnify and test it from there?
Yeah, right now, our, on the back nine of Turtle specifically, and, you know, this will get tweaked probably continually till we do it, but of those nine holes, we'll do it three different ways, you know, so we'll do some curfew on those nine holes, and we'll do some indemnify, and we'll do some holes where we don't do anything but increase fertility, and, and, you know, this summer, kind of monitor the, the progress to see how that works on our specific, specific soil. I mean, we know curfew works, we just know the problems of the disruption to the surface-
Oh, yeah.
-you know, the, the fact that it's not great for the environment.
Yeah. It's got a lot of negatives to it, but we're not going to curfew deer?
Uh, we're not curfuing, I'm not certain, there might be some, we're only going to do 20 acres, which is probably about less than a third of what we did in the past, 20 acres total, so I don't want to rule out that Robin would tell us, here, here's four acres that's, you know, exceptionally problematic, you know, that we would do certain areas, but in general, no, not much on deer.
Okay. Okay, well, that's, you and I have talked about this a lot, so you know where I'm coming from.
Does the product have any guarantee? I know a lot of times the chemical companies will guarantee it to work, or they'll, they'll reapply it, does, does the indemnify have, have anything like that with it?
I can check into that, I'm not aware of it, and probably the biggest reason I'm not aware of it is I haven't heard anybody say that it doesn't work. You know, it, it's actually been that, it's been that positive of a, of a situation, so I think the, you know, the only concern I would see with indemnify that you know, and, you know, more time is, does, is there a resistance, you know, these little guys tend to figure things out on their own, you know, is there some type of resistance that the nematode would, you know, develop? But right now, in its first few years of use, it's, it's the best thing I've seen in the last 10 years happen to the, you know, golf industry, to find something that works that's not detrimental to the environment, it's pretty great.
Okay.
Okay. I just said one other thing while you're here, Jim. I don't know if everybody read this, but Highlands' new sun readers choices, year 2017, they come out. And it was interesting when I got it, not that I read too much of this paper, but I do read this part. The golf, the golf course, we picked the number-one golf course in the county. The golf driving range, we were number one. The golf pro shop, we were number one. The golf pro, we were number one, Andy Kessling. The golf store, we were number one. Golf country club community, we were number one. We, Sun Lake won every contest, every part of that, that's up to you people. You've made that possible. And I think it speaks for itself that we advertise every once in a while, we're the number-one Highlands County, but I think we're, now we're looking, we can expand that. I went and played Admiral's Cove yesterday, and there's people over there that have heard, and they're coming to play here. And Admiral's Cove is pretty high-flying place. So I congratulate you.
Well, thank you. The vision starts at the board, you know, the, there's a lot more than funding, but without the funding, you know, it's hard to do. But we do have our sights set pretty high. And one of the things that is nice is, you know, fill it in on the lakes. You know, he, he makes his business from happy people and he's doing everything he can to send everybody that he possibly can here, which, which has to help our property sales and the whole perception of the community. So that's a great thing.
Yes. And I think, we've heard this, I've heard from state realty organization, we've heard it from our local realtors, and we've heard it from the special guys in here. The better we make these golf courses, the price of our houses go up. And the one guy that was there, the galt that's been everywhere, he was talking about 20, going up 20% when you, when the improvement of these golf courses is finished. So this is for everybody, non-golfers or golfers, the prices of our houses go up because of the golf courses, the recreation facilities and so forth. So I just want to thank everybody over there. Appreciate what you're doing.
Anything else?
No, sir. David?
All right, we've had movement on Ayala. There was a status conference on Wednesday. Judge Raden took, I was there in person and all the other attorneys were there by phone. The proposal that Judge Raden made was that the entire transcript from the prior hearing, you know, it's, in its entirety, exists, it's been transcribed, and Judge Raden has it available. He has talked with Judge Cowden. She's going to turn over the work that she's done on it to him. And all the attorneys agreed that they would have no problem with Judge Raden basing his order on the transcript. And so we should have an order in the next 30 to 60 days. My guess is, is we'll have it by the end of May on that, on that. And we'll know whether or not we're still in it or if we've been dismissed as to the district. Billboard stuff, we're kind of at a standstill, it appears. I have not heard back from the DOT's attorney. She was checking to find out if, she was aware that we were looking into the electronic billboard possibility. I'm not sure how she found out about that, but I guess with people calling in and getting, getting numbers. But anyway, she's trying to find out whether or not they can just give us a, pay a check directly to the district, you know, so that we, rather than trying to circumnavigate and have them pay a portion of it. Obviously, we haven't decided what we're going to do with the, with the electronic billboard yet. But, so yeah, she's, we're still waiting to hear back from the state as to what they're, how they're going to be able to get us the funds. I was made aware, last meeting, I missed it, but the last meeting, one of the, one of the resolutions, we missed the motion in a second, so it doesn't have any actual legal, you know, bearing. There was still a unanimous approval for the resolution, but we're going to try and be better on catching. If you guys miss something like that, we'll try and bring it to your attention. So, other than that.
General Manager's report?
Senior Manager, the maintenance facility is coming along and you can't miss it if you're on the driving range. The roof has been installed with the windows. The entranceway on Columbus is cleared. And we are now with the, with the color in the exterior. We'd like to, we are, it's time for our water tanks to be painted and we're looking into matching the water tank color with the building color. We have received two proposals for bid number 17-2 on Electrical Engineering Services related to utilities. And myself and staff will be reviewing the proposals within the next couple of weeks. Bid 17-3 was advertised for the District Directional signage designed by Don Bell Signs. Bids are due Monday, May 8th, 2:00 p.m. Drainage update, excavation point, they have mobilized on Sunrise Drive and they are expected to be finished late next week in that area and then they'll move to Calatrava Avenue. We had a power outage at the cart barn on Sunday and Duke Energy was able to come in and get that fixed. Apparently was an underground issue. Mike and, and his, and our contractor, electrical contractor came in, but we couldn't do anything with that. So, but thankful to Duke Energy, they were able to come in and repair that issue for us.
Can I ask something about, that would be a complete disaster if we woke up one morning and come in here and know those carts were charged. Is, do you think we ought to be considering some type of backup, generator backup system for that?
We've talked about it internally.
Oh, have you? Well?
We have, we have talked about it.
Oh, okay. Cool.
It would be a loss of, you can't, didn't have any play for that particular day, especially if you have no carts charged. So, but we're thankful it was just a cart barn.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it could have been the clubhouse. We, you know, never, you'll know in that situation, but we're thankful it was just a cart barn. We had two sessions of customer service training for our staff and then some of Jim's staff sat in and was taught by South Florida State College. And I've gotten some good feedback from that program. Thank you to Tanil and Omar for, you know, coordinating all that. You know, we try to have customer service training every year, but this is something that we reached out to the college to help us this year. The Florida Wildlife Commission's contractor has started building the fence at the north end of the district. It's approximately four miles. They are mobilized. We have already seen vandalism on equipment that they have rented. And so our security is going to be looking out at the north end of the district every day, you know, even at night, just to kind of, you know, watch things. So we expect vandalism and so we'll be doing the best we can, you know, to look out for that.
I spoke to Jim Jordan this week. He's the president of the Deer Run Homeowners Association. And I've updated him on the 270 vacant lots that were newly recorded, with the newly recorded deed restrictions for Deer Run. And I also talked to him a little bit about the concerns of the District Board of Supervisors and the county's minimum square footage requirements for residential homes. So I did reach out to him and we had a good conversation and maybe thinking of, once a year, you know, the district, you know, reaching out to their annual meeting and just giving their annual, you know, their, their association a little update on the district. Also, I talked to Gator Howerton this week and just a little update from Highlands County. Highlands County, they, they submit Department of Transportation grants on behalf of certain projects here in the district. The one project that was submitted before, and it has been resubmitted this year, was sidewalk on Sunland Lake Boulevard that would run from where the multi-use path starts on Sunland Lake Boulevard and it would go in front of the district office all the way across and connect into the doctor's offices. If you notice, we do lack a sidewalk on Sunland Lake Boulevard and a connector. Gator and his staff applied for this again and we were number one on the, the actual review list, they, out of 40, apparently. We haven't been awarded the grant, but we were on the top to receive a possible grant. It's a $229,000 project. So that would be something that DOT would handle entirely. We want to keep that moving. We want to, you know, look at our sidewalk projects and continue that relationship with the county and DOT. We also were, were rated number one for a second turn lane into the district on Highway 27. So if you notice, as you turn into the district from the south, and it's, there's only one turn lane. This is a $750,000 project that DOT has been looking into. We've applied for it and it's, it's a very needed turn lane. The more traffic we have, I mean, you could sit there for two light changes and not be able to turn in. So we were also rated number one for that project and it's a $750,000 DOT. Couple, couple things I'd like to mention, and Jim mentioned it already, special meeting dates. Next week, we have a, a special meeting, Wednesday, May 3rd, at 10:30 here at the Community Center with Architect CMSA. On Friday, May 5th, we have a special meeting at 9:00 a.m. at the Island View Restaurant with Henry Delosier. And finally, just a reminder, Friday, May 12th, will be our first budget workshop to discuss the general and utility fund budgets. Oh, and I have, I have one more announcement. The water cooler on deer is working. Duke Energy finally made it.
We know.
Oh, you know? Okay. I was, I was handed as a reminder.
Finally.
Thank you. That's all I have.
I got a question or just a comment. You mentioned about the DOT doing the sidewalk. Also, there was an article in the paper about Lake Placid getting Collector Road paved and the DOT gave a $500,000 grant to that. So Lake Placid only paid about 15% of that cost versus what they're asking us to pay 25%. My question is, can we go to DOT and get funds for the Schumacher project as well?
I can certainly inquire.
Is that something we would do or is that something the county?
The county.
Well, maybe you could ask the county to do that.
I can certainly inquire.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One more thing. You gave out this list of liens that have been processed or not. Can we put a dollar amount on that to get an idea?
Absolutely.
How much is coming and how much is going, kind of thing?
Unfinished business?
None.
New business?
None.
Committee reports?
None.
Public comment?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Goss Iverson. I'm a resident here in the district and I got several comments. I, for you guys who remember me from last time, anyhow, I bought two lots from you guys less than a month ago, where those lots were, one of them was owned by lands available by the county and owing taxes an amount of $5,867. I've got the paperwork here. And we bought both lots for, one, that lot on Granada and across the street, both lots for $10,000 from the district to paint and build houses on those. As a matter of fact, we already started building in one of the lots. Then I brought a business proposal to Mr. Daniel, which I have in here. Let me approach you guys to give you this. The two lots we bought, after you guys paid $6,000 in tax. It was a business proposal. And here the... Anyhow, the business proposal that I wrote was even better than the first one that we got from you guys. After you guys paid almost $6,000 in tax assessment values to the county, we bought those lots of worth assessed value of $12,000. We got them for $4,000, quote unquote, as a profit for you guys. But one of the lots was owned by you already. Didn't cost you anything, but was, had a tax assessed value of $4,000. Anyhow, talking about the same issue, you know, my opinion, from my last time I came over here, didn't like the comments I made about selective enforcement. And I don't believe, as a community member, that I want the best for the community and myself, that one person should take a decision on what's the business for this community. As a matter of fact, when we bought those lots from you guys, we were told that we could buy any lots owned verbally if we develop perhaps a price of the assessed value. And proposing to the community and to the board, an income of almost $40,000 within two years with no investment at all. Proposing to the board that we'll build 10 houses within the next two years that bring up our prices to the community and more people. So would like respectfully for the board to review my offer. Let me know. Also, from my last visit here, you guys remember, I was really upset about a notice of violation that I got for trash that wasn't even mine. Well, I own both lots on side of that lot that is on violation and nothing has been done. There was a desk back then, I even brought it here in the meeting, on right on the sidewalk. Took you guys two weeks after I even came here to pick it up, after I have to tell Mr. DeJesus that what's going on with his desk, he's been there for two weeks. So that's one more proof of selective enforcement, which I won't tolerate. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Rick Holbert. I keep getting asked questions at, how much do those signs that Sunland Lake puts up for lots for sale? How much do they cost us?
We paid $50 per sign.
$50 per sign?
Correct.
Okay. If you remember correctly, in this lot swap program, that was done quite a while ago. And if you remember correctly, it wasn't too long ago, we just did a lot swap on Cortez, at the end of Cortez. Is that not right?
Correct. It hasn't officially happened yet, but that is the, that was part of the deal to get that lot to do the Cortez extension.
Yes. I mean, it's in the process.
Correct.
So there is some, so there is some value to the lot swap program if we just wait a little while. And most of you board members up there don't remember why we initiated it in the first place. So I think you should go back and look at the reason why we initiated in the first place before you make a decision. Give it a little time before we make a decision on that. Because there is going to be a time when that could be very valuable to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Discussion to and from the board?
Okay, yeah, I have a couple things. I've had people come up to me mentioning this and I've talked with Mike about it and I think it's a good idea if we can figure out how to do it. But they, they're talking about a walking park fenced in for people's dogs, that they have someplace to go and walk their dogs. And you go to most, not most, many cities, all of them have some type of area designated where the people can take their dogs and walk their dogs. And we, I just want to put it on the board while we can think about it. We've got a budget year coming up and stuff like that. I think it's a good idea. And I think part of that should also be some type of kennel or some type of protected area where we can put Mike's dogs. He, they had one nice little dog down there the other day and it's staying down to the district office and it's everybody's pet. I don't know if, it may be the county dog now, I'm not sure, I mean, the district dog now. But the program's so successful, I think we need to add that to the walking area also because of how many dogs we... also, because of how many dogs that Mike's people find, stray, tied to trees and thrown out the door and everything else, but they always pick them up and take them and Mike always finds a home for them. And any donations you'd want to make, I understand Mike will take them, he took them from me, so he'll take them to, to, to help his program to pay for shots and food and feed and everything else. But I think that's important. I noticed, Mark's not here today, so I thought this might be an appropriate time to bring this up because there might be a legal question, telling them from federal court, there was a legal question to begin with. But some type of digital hookup for board members who are not present, like a Skype situation and so forth. Now, I'm not talking about to vote, I know that, you can't do that, I know that, but at least have a situation up where the video can be, they can be part of the meeting for discussion and so forth. So I just wondered if you just think about that, you know, there might be something we could do, that we carry our laptop and be in on the meetings, because I know probably out of 10 meetings I'd have with the court, five of them were, 50% of them were on the video screen, streaming. Another thing is, we're lucky to have a, a local college here and I think from being an old college dean, I think it's a good, that's a good avenue to tie in as, as friends, to try to get them to do things here if maybe we have to do things up there. I mean, just to start working with them. I don't know if they have an outreach person, I don't know if you know the president, you know, whatever, but I think it's really an institution that sits right next to us that we could probably take advantage of in different, different ways. So if you just be thinking about that. And that's it.
Kurt?
Yep, I'm done.
Larry?
No, I'm done.
I have a couple, a couple things. Tanya, I, I noticed in minutes, we were going to have something from the county on Schumacher Road, that something delayed or what happened?
We haven't seen the inter-local agreement yet, so we're waiting, we're still waiting.
Okay. Because it did say we'd have it for this meeting.
And I'll, I'll see Mr. Mc, yeah, I'll see Mr. Macbeth, probably either later on today or early next week and I'll get an update from him.
Okay. Okay. And I don't know if it was what this gentleman talked about, but I'm, once again, I'm going to ask about the lot on Granada. Is somebody saying that somebody came in with a dump truck and dumped all those trees there? Is that what's, we're being told? On that vacant lot?
What we were told is the person that owns it has, has no knowledge of who knocked the trees over. Now, there was deer.
Oh, so there, we're, we're told they were knocked over, that somebody just didn't bring them in there?
Right, exactly. They were knocked over. That's what we're told, we can't prove anything. There was construction done on both sides, well, there's been construction done on both sides of the lot. They know nothing about it. We did write them a letter. So I think either we're going to have to go in and clean up ourselves or leave it the way it is, but, but according to what they said to me, that, that they don't even know how it got there. But, you know, there was construction done on both sides of it, so, you know.
Let me ask you something. Can I ask a question, you're a jacked question. If a tree falls down on my lot, I'm responsible for it. Why aren't the owner of that lot responsible?
Well, they're saying, well, when, when we, we asked them how they got there, they said they know nothing about it and they were knocked over.
But it's still their lot.
It's still their lot. So we are going to have to cite them, right, and charge them, but they said they didn't do it.
That's their problem.
It don't matter.
I, I agree with you, cite them.
Kurt, do you have something to say?
I'm a witness who did it. I was there when they were doing it and they called me to offer me their lot, was the same owner. Then from six and four, it was a rental bocca and did, I got three weeks, one, one of them. So let me testify, I would, I would, I would make that up immediately.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to cite them anyways, so.
Cite them and charge them?
Yeah, because I, I think we need to, you know, with, with the new house built right beside it and it looks to be like he's going to build another one beside it, I mean, it looks like it's terrible. Right. Michael, I agree with you.
But I thought, I thought we were being told somebody trucked them in there and that, I was going to give somebody a saliva test on that one.
I agree with you.
Okay.
But, we will fix it.
Okay.
That's one thing we find around this district, that we still got the two biggest liars in the world, somebody and they.
It's always they.
Yeah, that was they.
And their cousin, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know.
Okay, anything else? Meeting adjourned.
We'll be done now.